This meeting of the Jefferson County Board will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Please push your Tandem confirm button. Jeff, yours didn't register. We have 27 present and three absent.
Thank you. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Waymire, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're invited to remain standing for a moment to contemplate our service to the public. Thank you. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
We are in compliance, Mr. Chair.
Next up is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like the order of the agenda altered in any way? Okay, we'll proceed as printed. Next is approval of the February 19th, 2019 minute, meeting minutes. Supervisor Renard, please.
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Next is communications.
We have a special order business. 6A, can we do that? It's a presentation of the Munis employees self-service by Terry Palm.
Thank you. Yes. Presentation of Munis employees self-service by Terry Palm Kostrowski. Thank you.
I know I'm no Mark DeVries, but bear with me. Hopefully, we get through this. This is just a quick demonstration so every one of you can see your paychecks online on our new system, Munis, instead of getting the checks here. So the checks on your desk tonight should be the last time you get the physical check. From now on, you should be able to log in and be able to view all the details from there. We'll put a reminder out next month as well with some of the directions and I'll email. You've got the packet, but I'll email you so you have the link as well. Sitting on there. So what is up there is the main screen when you log into that website that's on that front page. And you're going to go two different ways. You can either hit the citizen self-service or just the login button. And everybody in here has been assigned a username and a password that you'll go in and change, but your username is simply your first legal name followed by your five-digit employee number. For those of you who don't remember where that is, if you look on your ID badge, which I don't have on me, you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, hopefully, five digits. So, for example, mine is... I forgot what mine was. Isn't that funny? And then your password is going to be the last four digits of your social security number. And like I said, once you get logged in, you'll be able to go in and change that. It's gonna be a real short demonstration this way. Told you there would be technical errors. I had the right number the first time. Three times, okay. So once you get in there... You may get, and I didn't, I know sometimes I do, sometimes I don't when you log in, but you may get, if you look at the next page, a couple pages over, an error message. The error message will say access denied. You do not have permission to view this. Go ahead and just disregard that and click on that employee self-service, which is up in the upper right-hand corner. And once you get logged in, you're gonna see your own personal screen that looks similar to this. Obviously, you probably aren't gonna have the vacation, sick and holiday in there. And towards the bottom of it, you will see your paycheck history. All you need to do to go and view your paycheck is click on either the little camera button or the details. And I'm not gonna click that on because I've got the paper here and they're gonna sell all my information, so I'm not gonna... Just so that you guys know, it's as easy as that to get on there and look at everything that you need to do. There are some other features going in. I wish I could... If you click on your name at the top, right where I just did, you'll see my account. And when you go in there, that's where you can go in and change your password. So you just click on that. You're gonna have to again enter your current password, which is the last four digits of your social security number, and then you can create your new password. Just a couple of the other features that employees can use. I'm not gonna run through them all. But some of this will be also pertaining to you. If you hit that side, on the side, the pay tax information, again, all of your checks are gonna come up. You can hit looking at your W-2 information. So obviously, we weren't on this system for 2018, so there's no information in there. But next year, if you need a copy of that or to view your W-2 information, you're gonna find that there. If for any reason you get a 1099R, you can click on that. You know, often, well, not often, but a couple times a year anyway, board supervisors will come in and ask what they're doing for withholdings, especially about this time of the year as taxes are being done. And it's a nice place. You can just quickly go in there and look at your W-4. And if you need to make a change, you can contact either HR or Finance and we'll help you through that. I'm not gonna click on this one, but they do have a paycheck simulator in there. So if you go in and you wanna see what'll happen if you change your exemptions, it does a really nice job of showing you that right away of what your net pay would be after that. And then the total compensation is something that we used to have IT have to develop for us for employees, but the system automatically does that. So employees can see how much they're actually getting in wages, how much their vacation, how much for health insurance, all of that kinda stuff. So it's all at their fingertips for that. You can go into personal information, and we're looking at expanding this, but what's available right now for everybody, really the only thing you can go in and change, and there is an edit button on the bottom here. But if you ever change your email where you want any information sent to, you can just go in there and update it yourself. And Barb's smirking at me, so I'm not sure why. She thinks she can get away with it on her last time. So that's it. The other thing that then they really ask you to do is when you go in there, always make sure that you log off the system. Is there any questions? Anything else? Audrey? Enroll for dental in there? Oh, not right now, but that's a good question. We're still building like the benefits portion where people can go on and actually enroll in benefits and they'll see what they have. But as far as payments, I'll check into that. Greg?
Terry, where, how did you get to that initial page that you logged in?
It's on the front of cover. Hopefully, everybody has this on their desk. On ESS, it's in the red, the selfservice.jeffersoncountywi.gov. And I'll email this out to everybody. That way, you can just click on the link to get to the website. Anything else? I'll let you log off so I don't like, ruin everything on you.
Okay, now we go to the communications.
Okay, you should find on your desk the treasurer's report that was given out. Then we have the notice of public hearing from those planning and zoning, and that will be taking place on March 14th in this room at 7:00. You will also find, I believe on your desk, a report that was done by Amy Renard, our executive committee chair, summarizing the structure from, about the committees for county board. They met on that last time, so you can read through that. And then the only other thing that I have is a communication that just came in from Tim Finn, and he is informing us that... "Pleasure to serve on the Veterans Board, writing to inform you of my resignation of the commission." And this was dated March 12th. That's all I have.
Now we have a resolution. Resolution number 2018-92. Clerk Frank, would you please stand in front of the podium? I've asked county administrator to join us, as he has had the pleasure of spending many more hours with the county clerk, Barbara.
Mainly positive ways.
Mainly positive. Would you start the first paragraph, sir?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2018-92. Whereas Barbara A. Frank started her service to Jefferson County in the Human Services Department as a paperwork clerk commencing March 30th, 1981, and also held various positions in the courthouse in her whole election as Jefferson County clerk, and?
Whereas Barbara A. Frank served as Jefferson County clerk commencing February 11th, 1997, until April 3rd, 2019, where she served over 22 years for a combined total of 38 years of dedicated public service to Jefferson County, and?
Whereas Barbara A. Frank has unselfishly devoted herself to making Jefferson County a better place in which to live, work, and play, and?
Whereas Barbara A. Frank has demonstrated integrity in the administration of her duties that serves as a guide for all those who came to, she came in contact with, and?
Whereas Barbara A. Frank has demonstrated her professionalism, though her never-ending resolve to find that one supervisor who was unable to lock in his or her vote, and through her subtle eye-rolling at the county board chair rather than publicly chastising him, and?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Whereas Barbara A. Frank has taught us the importance of the "our" words, recounts and recalls.
And whereas Barbara A. Frank has ensured the county administrator and corporation council she worked with were properly mentored in her role as county clerk, and?
Whereas Barbara A. Frank had determined it is time to become a full-time OMA, and?
Whereas it's fitting for Barbara A. Frank to be recognized by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors for her dedication and devotion to public service.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Jefferson County clerk Barbara A. Frank for her many years of service to Jefferson County and wishes her well in retirement.
Be it far the resolve that Barbara A. Frank's final election as county clerk on April 2nd is hereby proclaimed Barbara A. Frank Day in Jefferson County. We are looking for a motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Get diveable? I think the one thing tonight, too, I just wanna point out, 'cause we mentioned the OMA, and I know that's one of Barb's passions right now. And so, I also recognize Barb's family is all here tonight to be here with her during this appointment moment as she's finishing up her term with you all. And so I just wanna recognize that that was an important part. They played and supported her through the last 38 years, missing various activities, but they're here tonight for her final support as she rides into the sunset.
And now let's join Barbara and her family and enjoy some cake.
Just thanks, everybody. And they did surprise me on this, 'cause I, you know, always gotta see what the agendas look like. So, you're pretty tricky with this, so, thanks for the kind words, and I've loved almost every minute of it, so. The recounts got to be a tad trying at times, and there were, I mean, there were times, but it's a wonderful place to work, and I couldn't have picked a better place to be. Thank you.
So we are gonna take five minutes to get cake passed out there before we move forward with the report, so, hold on.
Okay, continuing our tradition, when we have a young girl at a county board meeting, she's offered the opportunity to bang the gavel. Let's get this meeting back to order. Okay, we're back in session.
Okay, it looks like we have public comment next. I don't know if there is any.
Do we have any registrants for public comment? We do not. So we will go to annual reports. And we're taking a risk here. After that mini roast, we're going to give the microphone to county clerk Barbara Frank for her final annual report. Clerk?
Okay.
Just so you know, you contain your resolution, and you weren't supposed to see it, so it got a little confusing.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Barb Frank. I'm your county clerk. I'm giving my final, my...
Bye.
I'm giving my final report, which is, I believe, my 23rd report, maybe 22nd, whatever. So you have our report in front of you, and we botched up the numbers, so go out with a bang. As you know, November 6th election, we had 38,460 votes cast, and in August, we had 14,182. I apologize for that, but we missed that. So, that's kinda that. We've gone through a lot of changes over the years that I've been here, and we've done 61 elections, two recalls and six recounts. They've all turned out all right. We didn't have any problems here in Jefferson, but it's kinda Jefferson County, but it's kind of unbelievable when you look back and realize how many processes you've been through. We had paper ballots whenever I first came into the office. Then we had the wonderful punch cards. Well, those were kind of amazing, 'cause every time you ran them through, you'd get a different number. Those chads just, they just, they didn't do so good. So then we got, the year I was appointed, we started with the scan equipment that we currently have. We have now got an upgraded one. But then we used to have an archaic handicap voting came in, and you, everybody got a handicap machine. Unfortunately, nobody used it. It was big, it was monstrous, and it really was not very good. So last year, the county board approved that we could buy express votes. The express vote, how many of you have used those when you went to the polls to vote? One, two. All right, so next year, when Audrey does this report for you, everybody's hands gonna go up, okay? When you go to the polls, you have to try it. It's a touchscreen. It's awesome. And the nice thing about it is that if you run out of paper ballots and a municipality runs out, you can still vote. They just go, you mark your people, and it will give you a card with all your choices on it. Then you take that and you put it in the tabulator. I really, really encourage each and every one of you to go try that. We've had Towne of Jefferson just approved, approved, purchasing an additional machine. Well, City of Watertown has gotten additional machines. I know City of Fort Atkinson would like to. It's just very nice for the voter, 'cause they can see their selections. You get a summary at the end, and it'll, you know, you can double-check to make sure that's what you want. But the nice thing is, you don't have to worry about running out of ballots, so we don't have to hand-count the paper ballots. So I think it's been a wonderful improvement. The voters that use it like it, so I'd really encourage each of you to try it. And that's all thanks to you and diligently giving your budget money to technology, which is where we're going. We have a very good system, and everybody in the county's on the same system, in case you don't realize that. I've also been at 292 county board meetings, so I'm glad to say this is my final one. We, as if, anybody who knows me knows, I work hard, but I play hard. You gotta have fun. You have to have, you have to enjoy yourself. Work is work, but it's just work. I've had three administrators, love the one we have right now, worked for, worked under four county board chairs. He's all right, too.
Thank you, I think.
I think. That's as good as we do. It's kinda what my son-in-law got at their wedding, too. Well, he's all right, too. Two corporation councils, we do all right. Well, unfortunately, we went through five finance directors, so hopefully that stops now, so we're done. But, you know, they get opportunities in other places, and it's always worked out real well. One of the things that I do is work with, that you might not realize, is work with the property and liability insurance. I believe the finance department's gonna start doing that part a little bit more, as far as getting bids and making sure that the county has proper coverage. Another thing that I had done in the past was actually help with the health insurance. We used to be self-insured for health insurance. We had Blue Cross forever, and in 2000, we switched to WPS. So that was another, a big change. And then now we're no longer self-insured, and we've actually got a different company, and HR takes care of all that. In 2007, we did merging of our vault downstairs. So, you know, I came on, and there was just lots of stuff, and we just kept adding more stuff to it. 25,000 pounds of paper were shredded. So we just brought pallets of paper upstairs, and all the staff would take a box, and they'd sort through it when they had time, and there was lots of stuff that we could shred. So then in 2009, we started doing the passports in our office. They used to be down in the clerk of courts, also known as the bad clerk, and we added that people, we'll take photos for people. It's a little bit better fit. You'd go down there, and they'd have people in orange suits and shackles and other people with their families and their kids getting passports. So I think, fit-wise, it works out really well in our office. So, we sold the countryside. That was something that happened while I was here, built a new one, and then we sold it. So that's about it. So it's more of what my life was here as county clerk, and it has been a great pleasure. So thank you for being a great county board. Any questions? Perfect.
Thank you. Our next report is Register of Deeds Stacy Hoffman.
I'm not retiring. You're stuck with me for a while, so I apologize. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. And for those of you, I think every, most everybody here knows me, but I am Stacy Hoffman. I've been the Register of Deeds for, since 2007, and I hope to be for at least six more years, and then I will be in her beat. So I don't really wanna talk a lot about the handout that I gave last month. I figure you all can read it. You know that we are a money-making department. I like to bring that up all the time, 'cause you never know, the next year, we might not be, but I'm pretty sure we will be. I was trying to think of something really clever to talk about this month, because Jim came to our WCCO conference last week and gave a presentation on public speaking. We all could use that. We don't do a lot of it, and now I'm feeling really nervous, even more so than normal, because I think he's got his red pen out. I'm not supposed to say "um," so please don't count those. I do wanna thank, geez Louise. I wanna thank my staff first before I get into anything else, because our office would not be so successful without the people that we have working for us. So thank you for allowing us to hire quality people. Years ago, back in the 1800s, when you were Register of Deeds, you had to take a test to write, because everything is handwritten, and that was one of your requirements. You had to be able to write well. Nowadays, that doesn't matter. You have to be technical. You have to understand how change works, and you have to understand technology. So we just have an awesome group of people right now, and in a few months, I'll be probably coming back to you, because I'm hoping to fill another position as somebody retires. So hopefully, you will continue to support us in that. So I thought maybe what I might talk about is some of the questions that I get asked on a regular basis. So, first one is, why is the Register of Deeds elected? What the heck does this department have to do with being elected? Well, we were created, and this is probably more informational for you guys back there, we were created as a constitutional officer back in 1836. Excuse me, I didn't wanna say 1836. In 1848, we were actually became the constitutional officer. But our office was created in 1836, and what we are in charge of is protecting the land in our county. And they created two positions at that time. It was the sheriff and the Register of Deeds. The sheriff protects the people, we protect the property. And that position will go on, hopefully, for forever, because property is what our economic wealth of our county is on. So we need to make sure that what we protect and the information that we have is protected for forever, and we have to keep our records for forever, so. So the second question I get asked all the time, why are we partisan? Come on, what does Register of Deeds have to do with being Republican, Democratic, Independent? What do we have to do with it? The only reason we are partisan is because we are an arm of the state legislature. This, we were created as a part of the state legislature, legislature, I'm not saying that right. So when we talked, many years, should we make this a nonpartisan position? The legislators don't want that. They want us to stay partisan, because when somebody comes out and votes for Barb and Stacy and next year, Audrey, remember, vote Audrey and Stacy? When they come out and vote for us, they'll probably vote for them, too. But a lot of people don't like legislators. They don't wanna go out and vote for a senator and a representative, because they think, you know what they think. So I'm not even gonna go into that. But they do like Stacy and Audrey and Barb, so they're gonna come out and vote for us. As long as they're voting for us, they're gonna vote for them, too. So that's why we're partisan, as simple as that, no other reason. And then the other question I get asked a lot, and it kinda has to do with this appointment from Audrey last month, is why are the Register of Deeds appointed by the governor and not appointed by the county boards, like Barb's was? by the governor and not appointed by the county boards, like, like Barb's was? That's simply because we were an original part of the Constitution, and it takes a lot to change a Constitution. As you all know, you have to go through two election cycles, and you also have to have the electorate vote on that. So it's just as easy to leave us this way, I think, and that's the only reason it is. Not that we're any different, really. We all do the same thing, we serve the public, so. So those are a few of the things, main questions I get asked all the time. And then the other question is, well, what do you do? Who really uses your records? Because how important are your records? Well, as I said, we're the economic wealth of our nation. But when we were doing our priority-based budgeting, thank you, Ben, I was doing some studying on how much we use our records and who uses them. So I had this lovely report that I could run out of my land record system that tells me how many minutes people use our, our Laredo or subscription each month. So I did this in January, and it, I was surprised to see that people used 122,000 minutes in our, of our data in the month of January alone. That's 244, or 2,044 hours. We work 2,080 hours in a year. That much was used data-wise in our system. So then I thought, well, if that's what it was in just one month, what was it last year? 1.7 million minutes. People were looking at our records. That's a lot of minutes. That's 218,000 hours people are using the information out of our system. So it's important that we have it, people need it, you want to buy a house, you want to get a mortgage, you're going to be foreclosed on, all those type of things are, are records that we keep in our office. So we don't only do real estate records, we also do vital records. So if you need your birth, marriage, or death, you always come and get, visit us. So I thought I'd try to see how many times people came in last year on that. 3,913 people came in to our office at the front counter looking for a birth certificate. And sometimes we could help them, sometimes we couldn't. Now with the statewide system, we can help everybody. The sheriff is going to be coming in soon to get his, and even though he was important in Jefferson, so that's an awesome thing that we have. We also had 151 people last year coming to genealogy. People want to know the history of their family, the history of their land. We had a woman in today who wanted to know, who owned her land previous to her, because there's a ghost in her house, and she wants to know who he is. So she only, she not only searched her land, she searched death records to see if she could find out what the man died from, so she can talk to him. So those are the type of things that we do. We wear hats, different hats, all the time. People see us in the grocery stores and out to eat, and they ask us all kinds of questions about the county. As you know, we have to live in the county where, where we work. So we're one of the only department heads, as constitutional officers, that have to live here. And we live here, and we talk to people, and we give all good news about the county. It's always good. So that's what we do, and that's about all I have to say. I don't have any human interest stories to tell you, other than maybe the ghost story, but that's what we do. So if anybody ever wants to search your property, please come in our office, we'll set you up, we'll get you going. And just to let you know, we have about 600,000 records that are available online. We have about 800,000 more that need to be put online, so we'll get those going, and we'll get you back to 1836. Any questions? Yes, Augie?
Yeah, I have a question on your output measures. I noticed under our revenue, ROD revenue gross total, 2018 estimate was 1,559,384. Your actual was 1,559,384. How did you do that?
Yeah. Well, actually, when I put the estimate in there, I already, I already knew what my, what my number was, so it was a little misleading, so I apologize for that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're really good in our office, we don't mess around. And as, as you might have noticed also on there, so like I said, we are a money-making department. We were asked to make an additional 163,000 or 162,000, whatever it was, for the general revenue, but we brought in 262. So we made an extra $100,000 to help the rest of the county out. I keep reminding you that, because who knows what next year it will be. We're supposed to be in a recession at the end of this year, so I just want to forewarn people. Yeah, how exciting, huh?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next annual report is from Treasurer John Jensen.
I don't have much to say, but I agree with almost everything she said, and I do use her records. So if you want to, if you've seen my report, it's just a statement of what we've had. I'm not going to go over all the numbers, but in the bottom line, we started the year cash balance of 947,000 and finished with about 540,000. So you'll see it, the outstanding, the bank balance of 1,245,148 dollars and nine cents, less the outstanding checks at the end of the year are 7,489527, for a total of 5425282 balance at the end of the year. I'm not going to go over the interest, the total interest we got was 988,000. Just some history from the last recession, the last probably six years, our delinquent taxes has went down steadily all the way, and, but the reflection in that is that when the delinquent taxes go down, your revenue on interest on the delinquent taxes goes down also, which is some loss of revenue, but with, in that same time period, we've also had interest rates go up. So you've seen a steady increase in investment interest, so they've kind of offset, so, so we're, we're really looking pretty good at the, as far as just kind of stabilizing the treasurer's office. We just, I don't know if anybody, those kids are here, but, you know, we deal with close to 150 million dollars in taxes through the whole county. I don't have the exact number, but, so when I do settlements and tax settlements, we're dealing with all the, all the schools, all the municipalities, M A T C, all your special districts, and we divide that all up. So this past month, February, I take over collection. And that actually is down quite a bit of the month that I took over. It used to be near 28 million, and now we're just under 22 that I've taken over. Some of that has to do with people, especially last year, that ended up paying a lot at the end of the year. In December, instead of carrying it over, they paid a bunch off, so we're taking over a little less than that, but in, end of February, we sent out delinquent notices. I think I sent out about 13, 13 or 1,400. So those have been steadily coming in, so we've been seeing, seeing that on the rise. Other than that, we're business as usual. We're, I agree with Stacy about, we all have really good employees in our offices, and we couldn't operate without that. And I hope you realize how important that is for the county to have people that are good in their positions, they're trustworthy, that get along with the public, because as elected officials, you know, we're always, always under the scrutiny, always under the next vote, and, and we're, we're very lucky in this county to have good, dedicated employees, and, and I thank you for that, so. With that, I'll open up for any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes annual reports for this evening. Now we go to committee reports, resolutions, and ordinances. First to the building is the Building and Grounds Committee with a resolution accepting bid to construct a post-framed storage building at the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office Training Facility in Lake Mills. Supervisor Payne, please.
Resolution number 2018...
93.
93. Executive summary. The Jefferson County Sheriff's Office solicited bids from vendors to construct a post-framed storage building at the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office Training Facility in Lake Mills. The Building and Grounds Committee met on March 6, 2019, and recommended forwarding, forwarding this resolution to the county board to accept the bid from BOSS as the lowest responsible bidder at a cost not to exceed $71,000. And as you can see here, we just had two responsible bids. Fiscal note. Funds of $68,000 for this project have been allocated in the 2019 Sheriff's Office budget. An interdepartment budget adjustment will be made for the difference between accepted bid amount and the budget. I move for approval of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to accept the bid to construct a post-framed storage building at the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office Training Facility in Lake Mills. Discussion. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Hang on just a second.
Supervisor Nass, please, you have a question?
No, they asked who seconded. I was just waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, shoot, hang on, we got to make Mr. Hurt.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't mean like away, you can vote. Okay, we have 28 yes, zero no, and two absent.
The resolution is adopted. Now we go to, again, the Building and the Grounds Committee with a resolution accepting bids to replace two boilers at the Human Services Workforce Development Building. Supervisor Payne, please.
Executive summary. The Human Services Department solicited bids from vendors to replace two boilers at the Human Services Workforce Development Building. The Building and Grounds Committee met on March 6, 2019, and the Human Services Board met on March 12, 2019, and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board to accept the bid from Sun Mechanical as the lowest responsible bidder. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors hereby accepts the bid from Sun Mechanical as the lowest responsible bidder to replace two boilers at the Human Services Workforce Development Building in the amount of $50,500. Fiscal note. Funds of $40,000 for this project have been allocated in the 2019 Human Services Department budget. An interdepartment budget adjustment will be made for the differences between the accepted bid amount and the budget. I move for approval of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to accept bids to replace two boilers at the Human Services Workforce Development Building. Discussion. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Hang on. Go ahead. Jeff, it works better if you lay it down?
Not yet.
Is your light turning on? There's a little light on it. Your votes are locked in. We have 28 yes, zero no, and two absent.
The resolution is adopted. Now to the executive committee with a resolution creating a broadband working group to review broadband projects and consider funding options to expand broadband infrastructure. Supervisor Renard, please.
Resolution number 201895. The Public Service Commission of Wisconsin has been authorized to certify communities as being broadband-ready by issuing a broadband-forward certification that signals a local unit of government has taken steps to reduce obstacles to broadband infrastructure investment. On December 11, 2018, the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors enacted a broadband-forward community model ordinance for the purpose of expanding broadband access and usage in underserved areas of Jefferson County. The executive committee determined that creating a broadband working group would facilitate expanding broadband access and usage in underserved areas of Jefferson County. This broadband working group will consist of five to seven members appointed by the county board chair as follows. One member from the Finance Committee, one member from Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium, one member from Planning and Zoning Committee, and one member from the Executive Committee, with the remaining members selected at the discretion of the county board chair. The executive committee considered this resolution at its February 27, 2019 meeting, and recommended forwarding to the county board for approval. A fiscal note. Working group members will be paid a per diem for meeting attendance in accordance with county policy. And I would just like to take this time to make a few minor corrections to the text of the resolution. In the fourth whereas clause, the broadband working group will consist of five to seven members appointed by the county board chair, and in the following paragraph, the last sentence should read, "One member from the executive committee, one member from the Finance Committee, one member from the Zoning Committee, one member from the Economic Development Consortium, and the remaining members selected at the discretion of the county board chair." I move approval of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to create a broadband working group to review broadband projects and consider funding options to expand broadband infrastructure. Discussion. Supervisor Morris, please.
Just, do you see this as eventually becoming a standing committee, or, it's called a working group right now? Like, how long?
At the discretion of the executive committee and the board as a whole, that could be seen as a possibility. Further discussion? Just a note, you, you may note that there's authorization to appoint seven members. To date, five have been appointed. The chair may or may not appoint two additional members at a later date. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Next appointments by a county board chair to the broadband working group. Those appointments are Jeff Johns, Dick Jones, Russ Coats, Jim Mode, and Amy Renard. Now to the Finance Committee with a resolution authorizing contingency fund transfers to offset fiscal year 2018 departmental deficits. Supervisor Jaquil, please.
Resolution 2018...
96.
96. Executive summary. At current, county administrator requests budget transfer from contingency or general funds to offset departmental deficits. This request was reviewed by the Finance Committee and acted on by, and acted on by county board for approval. This resolution will authorize transferring 277,350 dollars from the contingency fund for various county departments due to expenditures in excess of appropriations for fiscal year 2018. The Finance Committee considered this resolution at its March 5, 2019 meeting, and recommended forwarding it to the county board for approval. Now therefore be resolved that the aforementioned transfers of funds are hereby approved, and the 2018 budget is amended to reflect the same. I will let everybody read the fiscal notes, because there's one for each one, and to keep it a little shorter. I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to authorize contingency fund transfer to offset fiscal year 2018 departmental deficits. Mr. Waymeyer, would you give us a brief explanation, please?
So one item that we talked a lot with the Finance Committee on this past year is how we do these deficits. So a lot of this is dealing with some of the new accounting standards and making sure it's based on budget, actual versus actual. And in the past, we literally just looked at revenues coming in versus expenditure. So this is getting us more to better business practice related to our accounting standards. So in some cases, that's why you'll see some numbers a little bit differently, because it's based on that. All in all, it's a pretty good year. If you look at our total amount of dollars that we are authorized, we'll be actually sending more than this back to the general fund through a lot of hard work of the staff and working with you all. So I'm proud of where staff ended up this year. We're continuing to work. Obviously, we saw some of these questions about the Sheriff's Department, and again, we're, we got hit hard with overtime this last year with some transition going on at department, and we're going to continue to focus on getting those overtime costs down a little bit more. So other than that, I'm open to any questions you may have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Waymeyer? Any discussion on the resolution? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Your votes, your votes are locked in. It's twenty-eight yes, zero no, and two absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now, from the Finance Committee, a resolution disallowing claim of Rhonda Baker. Supervisor Jaikle, please. Okay. Yeah, this is the other end of that.
Yes.
The other end of the accounting sheet. First, we have a resolution authorizing year-end request to carry over funds for fiscal year 2018. Supervisor Jaikle, please.
Resolution 201897.
Seven.
At year-end, departments are required to submit carryover requests for funds that are unspent. If the county administrator approves a request, it is reviewed by the Finance Committee and acted on by the County Board for approval. There is a total of thirty-seven million four-hundred-and-thirty-one, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents proposed to be carried over for the fiscal year 2018 to fiscal year 2019. And of this amount, twelve million eight-hundred-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight-and-eighty-five cents requires County Board approval. This resolution will authorize carryover funds of twelve million eight-hundred-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents from fiscal year 2018 to fiscal year 2019. The Finance Committee considered this resolution at March 5, 2019 meeting and recommended forwarding this resolution to the County Board for approval. Now therefore be resolved that the funds in the accounts identified in the Finance Committee's minutes as of March 5, 2019, and referenced above totaling twelve million eight-hundred-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents are designated as non-lapsing in the 2018 budget and carried forward, carried over to the 2019 departmental budgets, which are hereby amended in their respective amounts. Mr. Chair, I move passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to authorize year-end request to carry over funds for fiscal year 2018. Discussion. Any question for Mr. Waymire regarding carryover requests? Supervisor Morris?
I'm not really even sure how to word the question, Ben, so...
Okay.
When we do the budget every year, I mean, I don't know of a year where we haven't had carryover requests. So, how do we take carryover requests into our budget processing every year? Do we anticipate that we're gonna have XYZ amount of carryover requests any way, and so that's gonna impact how we put the budget together?
Most of the carryover requests that you will see are geared toward specific one-time cost or one-time expenditure specifically usually for a project or a designated account. We also have several other departments, Parks is a prime example, that they'll get donations for a specific purpose that creates a restriction because that donor had a specific purpose for that. So, it's really, it's, some of that we incorporate to the budget. So, if this past cycle, if you look at the capital budget pages, you actually see that we actually showed carryover in advance to ensure that some of those capital projects could be completed. This was kind of a rough year for some of our capital projects. In some cases, it was tough to get some contractors to some quotes, so that pushed some items back. So, that's part of the reason why there were some carryovers as well. And if you also look, when you look down, that number looks really big, but go down to the bottom of the page in the Highway Department, so this kind of comes to our lesson on accrual and modified accrual accounting. But our Highway Department is considering Enterprise Fund, which means it's an accrual department. So, as part of this carryover, we have to show the total net assets or capital positions that we have. So, of that thirty-two million, over twenty-four million of that is our capital investments that we have. So, it kind of skews a little bit, but for my accounting purpose, we have to carry over. So, we do look at it at a budget standpoint. There are some modifications you will be seeing coming up. So, an example, in this request this year is going to actually be sent up a reserve for the Human Services Department to help anticipate those unknown costs for auto-home placements, as an example, and try to protect us for future operational costs related to those expenses.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, on the question of carryover requests, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Go ahead. Your votes are locked in. We have twenty-eight yes, zero no, and two absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now to the resolution disallowing the claim of Rhonda Baker. Supervisor Jaikle, please.
Resolution number 201898. The claim has been made against Jefferson County by Rhonda Baker for the damage to her vehicle. The claim has been reviewed by the county insurance carrier, Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance Company, and it was recommended for disallowance based on the finding that the county is not legally responsible for the alleged damages. The resolution formally denies the claim filed against Jefferson County and directs Corporation Council to give the claimant notice of disallowance. Finance Committee met on February 11, 2019 and recommended forwarding this to the County Board, County Board to disallow the claim. Now therefore be resolved that the County Board of Supervisors hereby disallows the claim of Rhonda Baker and directs the Corporation Council to give claimant notice of this disallowance. I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to disallow the claim of Rhonda Baker. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. I believe that the executive summary of all of these, disallowing the claim resolutions is identical, so I think you could probably, for the sake of brevity, with these next three, Supervisor Jaikle, just make the motion. So, next is the resolution disallowing the claim of Deanna Pritchard.
Resolution 201899, disallowing claim of Deanna Pritchard. I move for passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to disallow the claim of Deanna Pritchard. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Now a resolution disallowing the claim of Jose Rivera.
Resolution 2018100, disallowing claim of Jose Rivera. Move passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to disallow the claim of Jose Rivera. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Finally, from the Finance Committee, a resolution disallowing claim of Patrick Jones.
Resolution 2018101, disallowing claim of Patrick Jones. Same as above, I move passage of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to disallow the claim of Patrick Jones. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Now to the Human Services Board with a resolution authorizing Jefferson County Human Services to join the National Collaborative for Infants and Toddlers and the National Association of Counties. Supervisor Mode, please.
Resolution number 2018102. Executive summary. Recent studies show that the most rapid period of brain development occurs within the first three years of life, developing faster from birth to age three than at any other later period. The Jefferson County Human Services Department recognizes that counties play a pivotal role in the development of their youngest residents. The National Collaborative for Infants and Toddlers, NCIT, and the National Association of Counties, NCO, is organizing a national effort to ensure families have the support they need to give their infants and toddlers the foundation for a strong start in life. This resolution authorizes the Jefferson County Human Services Department to join the National Collaborative for Infants and Toddlers and the National Association of Counties. The Jefferson County Human Services Board met on February 12, 2019 and recommended forwarding this resolution to the County Board for approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson County Human Services Department is authorized to join the National Collaborative for Infants and Toddlers and the National Association of Counties to prioritize and invest in prenatal to three efforts which will help ensure families have the support they need to give their infants and toddlers the foundation for a strong start in life. Fiscal note: This resolution has no fiscal impact. Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Moved and seconded to authorize Jefferson County Human Services to join the National Collaborative for Infants and Toddlers and the National Association of Counties. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you to the Human Services Board and Department for your attention to this issue. Now we go to the Parks Committee with a resolution authorizing application for outdoor recreational development aids grant to fund the snowmobile trail maintenance program. Supervisor Teetz, please.
Resolution number 2018103. Authorizing application for outdoor recreational development aids grant to fund the snowmobile trail maintenance program. Jefferson County participates in the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources' snowmobile trail aid program, which maintains approximately one-hundred-ninety-nine, not, one-hundred-ninety-one miles of public snowmobile trails and is funded by Wisconsin DNR grants. These grant funds require County Board authorization to submit a grant application. This resolution authorizes the Jefferson County Parks Director to submit a Wisconsin DNR snowmobile trail aid grant application, seeking funds for the snowmobile trail maintenance and development, and to administer the funds according to the grant requirements. The Parks Committee considered this resolution on its February 4, 2019 meeting and recommended forwarding to the County Board for approval. Fiscal note: The snowmobile program aid program is expected to cost approximately fifty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars for winter of 2019-20. One-hundred percent of this cost is funded by the grant, and the anticipated grant funds have been included in the adopted budget for 2019. The Jefferson County Finance Director is authorized to make the necessary budget adjustments for any supplemental funding grant by the DNR as related to construction and maintenance of additional miles of trails to exceed the one-hundred-and-ninety-one miles. Mr. Chairman, I move for Resolution number 2018103.
Moved and seconded to authorize application for outdoor recreational development aids grant to fund the snowmobile trail maintenance program. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Go ahead. Twenty-eight yes, zero no, and two absent.
Resolution is adopted. Now to the Planning and Zoning Committee with a report on approval of petitions followed by the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance. Supervisor Nass, please.
Excuse me. Report to annual members of Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee having considered petitions to amend the official zoning map, Jefferson County filed for public hearing held on February 21, 2019 as required by law pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Notice thereof having been given, be duly advised of the wishes of town boards and persons in affected areas makes the following recommendations. Approval of petitions, numbers listed below. Dated this 25th day, February 29, 2019, Blaine Paulson, Secretary. Moves this to ordinance number 2018...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. I move for the adoption of this ordinance as printed.
Moved and seconded to amend the zoning ordinance as printed. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
We got you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kenard. So recorded. The ordinance is adopted. Now to appointments by the County Administrator. Mr. Waymire, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By authority vested in me in 59.18, subpar and two, subpar and B of the Wisconsin State statute, I hereby appoint the following individuals to various boards and commissions of the county. Tim Anno of the Lake Mills to the Veterans Service Commission for a three-year term ending March 12, 2022. Carl Yager Jr. of Exonia to the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission for a five-year term ending January 1, 2024. Dan Jacob of Fort Atkinson to the zoning board adjustment as first alternative, filling the expired term of Paul Heineck, ending July 1, 2021. and Laverne Burns of Jefferson to the zoning board adjustment as second alternative, filling the expired term of Don Carroll, ending July 1, 2019, and additional three-year term ending July 1, 2022. I respectfully respect confirmation of certain of these appointments.
Motion to confirm.
Moved and seconded to confirm the appointments. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The appointments are confirmed. Appointments by the County Board Chair. By the authority vested in me by statute and County Board rule, I appoint Augie Teetz, Watertown, Wisconsin, to the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission for a three-year term ending April 30, 2022. Does that require confirmation?
Yes.
I respectfully request confirmation.
Move to confirm.
Moved and seconded to confirm. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I owe you one, Supervisor Teetz. Now appointments by the Human Services Board. Carol Battenberg to the Nutrition Project Council for a three-year term ending March 12, 2022. Supervisor Mode, please.
By virtue of the authority vested in the Human Services Board under Section 3.06, Paragraph 1, Subparagraph G of the County Board rules, the Human Services Board hereby requests County Board's confirmation of the following appointment: Carol Battenberg, Johnson's Creek, Wisconsin, to the Nutrition Project Council for a three-year term ending March 12, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I move for this appointment.
Moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The appointment is confirmed. Now as for public comment for items not on this evening's agenda, do we have any registrants? Would any member of the public like to comment? Okay, and we go to a proclamation. Proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Supervisor Mode, please.
Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Jefferson County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas it is the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect that child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood, and whereas Jefferson County has many dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas the Human Services Board at its February 12, 2019 meeting unanimously voted to forward this proclamation to the County Board of Supervisors for adoption. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of April 2019 to be Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Fiscal note: Adoption of this proclamation will not have any fiscal impact to the county other than the expenditure of staff time. Promotion materials will be funded by outside private donations. Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of this proclamation.
Moved and seconded to proclaim the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Proclamation is adopted. Now announcements. Are there any announcements? Mr. Waymire, please.
I want everyone to pay attention to the lower right-hand corner of your agenda. It is April. April means we follow the state law for when we have to meet, which is the third Tuesday of the month. So, it is April 16, which is the third Tuesday, so that's change number one. Change number two, it is at 5 o'clock. Again, 5 o'clock, and we do that because we know we have numerous members here, because all the other local communities have to meet on the third Tuesday of the month as well. So, that way, if you have townships or local city council meetings you'd like to attend, we meet at 5, so you can go to that following this meeting, so.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please make note of that. Now, other announcements. The chair has a couple announcements. If you look at the flagpole at the main entrance of the courthouse tomorrow, March 13th, it's K-9 Veterans Day, and there will be a special flag hanging. This is to recognize working canines in the military and law enforcement. It's a statewide proclamation. And thank you to Sheriff Milbrath for arranging that. Also, do you have at your desks the appointments to the Comprehensive Plan and Steering Committee? Would anybody like me to read those out loud? You'll see that there are several slots yet to be determined. We have people in mind for those, but we haven't confirmed yet. So, more to come next month. Any other announcements? Moved and seconded to adjourn. Supervisor Lund?
In honor of Barb Frank's last meeting, I would like to request a roll call vote for adjournment, please.
And I've already closed out of everything, so thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Lund. Supervisor Morse, did you have?
I didn't get a second.
Second is not required. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Ay yi yi, that isn't very nice. Okay, go for it.
That was a good one, Kirk.
Everybody loves me, don't they?
Yeah, we don't want you to leave.
Ah, you'll do just fine. Well, Mr. Schroeder, you have to do it.
You pronounce my name right, I will.
Yeah, today you're Schroeder, tomorrow you're Schrader. Oh, sure, I can't, my mouse is lost. Where'd he go? Yeah, because it was already closed out. We're not doing this again. We're good. Thank you, everyone.
We are adjourned. Thank you.